Go to the November 4th, 2025 work session of the Rutherford County Schools coming to you live from Stewart's Creek High School. We will open the meeting with a brief moment of silence or prayer and a pledge of allegiance to the United States flag. No one is required to participate or be present for any of these, and being in this portion of the meeting is completely voluntary. Ms. Sharp, you're in charge of our pledge and prayer this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Everybody bow your head, please. Lord, we thank you for this day, this beautiful day. We thank you for this beautiful building that our students are in. We thank you for the administration, all our teachers, the custodians, all the people that support our children that are in this building and our surrounding buildings in the entire county. We thank you for your son, Jesus, and we pray that you bless this meeting and make us have wisdom and discernment and lead to good, good decisions. We thank you and praise you. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for First up, we have the approval of the agenda. If anybody would like to take a look at the agenda. Any comments or questions or anything to add? Next, we can take a look at the consent agenda. Any comments or questions, anything to add? Okay. We have no public comments tonight. Our next discussion of middle school rezoning.
Yes, so just to give everyone a timeline, so the board in 2023 adopted a draft proposal for our new Poplar Hill Middle School. And so that draft definitely needs to be updated based on new growth, new enrollment numbers. Our board has spent the last six hours together today with our zoning consultant at our Board of Treat looking at new enrollment numbers which are attached to this. So over the next week, week and a half, we will be working as a staff to come up with some new modifications. And then on, I'll discuss a little bit more on Thursday as well with a presentation so that it's on our normal channel. But then on November 18th, we will have a new proposal to consider. We'll discuss that again on November 20th so that the public can see both. We will also have signs at all of our schools that are potentially impacted with our new school rezoning. Then the, we'll have Rob with RSP there on November 18th as well to discuss those. That'll give the community a couple weeks to familiarize themselves with our proposed zones. Then December 9th will be when the board will have another work session to look at those zones with hopefully a decision on December 11th to approve the new middle school zones. The other item that we are looking at, or it's going to be a request, is to look at Stewart's Creek Elementary and Brown's Chapel to potentially look at modifying some of those existing areas so that we can relieve some of the overcrowding at Stewart's Creek Elementary. But as you will see on this, and we'll talk a little bit more on Thursday, we are anticipating about 5% growth at the elementary school level and then double-digit growth over 10% at the middle and high school level over the next five years. So growth's continuing, so I continue looking forward to working with our board and our county commission to continue to build buildings so that our students can be in the best possible situation to continue to make great results.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody want to add anything? Okay. We're going down to seven.
Yep.
Financial matters.
Number seven, this is a Fund 141 budget amendment. This amendment increases budgeted fiscal year '25-'26 Fund 141 revenue and expenditures to recognize TESA on behalf payments. These payments are funds generated for students under TESA but not issued to the LEA. They are paid directly to the state for specific items such as the state portion of charter school payments, education savings account, individualized education accounts, and juvenile detention centers. TDOE requires LEAs to report these payments in their financial statements and provide the amounts at year end. This is a budget-neutral amendment and does not require any net gain or loss to the general purpose school budget. The amount of these budgeted injuries is $4,017,240. Mr. Rooney, is there anything you want to add to that other than it's, it's not really money that we ever see or...
Yes, it's money we never see. It's basically a wash. It's a, it's a credit to the revenue and a debit to expenditures, and it's worth the same amount. So it doesn't do anything to...
What are you doing over there, Brian?
That's all I got.
Okay.
Hot mic.
Ms. Maxwell?
Yes.
So I mean, this is just passed or...
Yes.
Yes.
We're not seeing, they're putting it through the school systems books, but it's just going right out the other side.
Correct, yep. And I believe this was at the request of the comptroller, is that correct? Be careful. You can just yell at us.
Yeah, it's a requirement of our year-end reporting of those being, those accounts being accounted for.
Okay. That's all? We'll go next to properties.
All right, the first one is McFadden Properties. So contracts have been negotiated with owners of five parcels surrounding the existing McFadden School. Parcels can be used for renovations to McFadden. The contracts have an inspection period of 180 days with two 30-day extensions to provide the board sufficient time to study, test, and evaluate the properties for possible purchase. Contracts are also contingent upon the county commission approving funding for the purchase of the properties. Mr. Reed?
Is this on or not? Okay. So it's important to talk about maybe doing renovations at the McFadden School. That's something the board's looking and considering doing at some point soon. To do that, there's some parcels around the McFadden School that you would have to acquire to get enough space to do the renovations of the school and be able to keep the school open at the same time. Most of the houses around there, all the five properties are small houses which are probably not, I guess you could say, not in great A condition, but you can really probably get them a pretty fair price if you decided to buy them. But we do have contracts negotiated with the five owners of these tracks. And if the board likes to get them under contract, there is no financial obligation unless you decide to move forward with the contract. So if you want to tie them up, just so the property's secure while you go ahead and consider whether you want to do something at McFadden, we can sign these contracts and you have an inspection period for 180 days. So that's basically a free look. So you're not out any money during this 180 days, but you tie up the property so you can, if you do decide to move forward with the heating and McFadden, you've got the property there tied up to use it for your, the school should you decide to move forward with the project. So, so the contracts are, have 280-day inspection period, they have two 30-day extensions on them to give you additional time for any testing, inspections, geotech, the same things you would normally go through with any other school site. And they're also contingent on county commission funding for the project. So if you decide to move forward with the contracts, you tie up the properties, but there's really no immediate financial risk to the Board of Education. So you're basically just tying up the properties, saying, hey, we would like to consider these properties for a McFadden expansion. And if you decide to go move forward, you have these five properties there to use should you decide to move forward with the project and you need, should you need these five properties. So that's the agenda item we have for item eight.
Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Sharp?
Where are we on the Lee Road property? Because aren't we, have we passed our deadline?
The Lee Road...
To purchase?
Well, no, we've not passed our deadline. Answered question. We have not yet closed on the Lee Road property. The owner of it passed away, so, so the estate was in the midst of being opened and has not yet opened, as you may not know this, but there was a conservatorship, conservatorship opened for the owner that was in place before she passed away. While the property was under contract, she passed, unfortunately, she passed away. So the estate has to be open before we can close it. I've been talking to the heirs and they're all waiters in the process of getting the estate open, and then we'll close the property. Funding's approved, it's ready to go as soon as the estate is open.
Does it have to go through probate?
No.
Any other questions?
Ms. Maxwell?
Yes, Ms. Sallis.
What's the asking price for these properties? You said there's a contract negotiation.
The five properties are in your, in your pack, your materials there, and general ballpark, they're about 300K each in that ballpark.
Were there appraisals done?
We have not done appraisals yet. That'll be part of the process to do due diligence. So if we want to get appraisals done, we would do that within the 180 days.
Ms., Ms. Darby?
I have a couple questions. Dr. Sullivan, I think last time we discussed this, someone was supposed to be getting some figures together on what it would look like if we maneuvered students to Holloway High School while we rebuilt. Do we have those yet?
We don't, because internally, that wasn't something that we felt comfortable doing, but if that's something the board still has a majority vote wants us to do, we can. We don't have enough room for that many kids, a 400 kids, to go to Holloway with the kids that are there now. Because that, 400 kids are at McFadden. When I'd said 240, that was Homer Peter Campus School. I got my numbers mixed up between campus and McFadden.
And Mr. Reed, did you negotiate these contracts?
I did not directly negotiate the contracts, no.
Who did?
Mr. Vaught was involved in the negotiation with owners.
If I'm not mistaken, the board voted for Mr. Reed to negotiate these, correct?
Yep. Yeah, I don't recall on that. I know, I know Mr. Vaught said that he maybe had some opportunities for some properties and how he should proceed with it, and we didn't talk about us proceeding trying to negotiate these properties, yes.
I just, it's a little unsettling to me that, well, this discussion took place, the board voted to allow you to engage in those conversations, and apparently something completely different took place that the board did not vote on, that no one else was privy to, so...
Well, the contracts will be before you, and then if, if the board's inclination is to do something different than what's in the contracts and wants to, wants me to counter at some price to the owners or negotiate some different deals, I'm happy to do that and let me know. The 180 days does give us kind of a free look at these properties. So we have a free look for 180 days. I did prepare the contracts, so the contracts were, contracts I prepared, so, and...
Like, did not negotiate though, correct?
Correct.
You prepared them at what Mr. Vaught, the information he gave you?
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Maxwell?
Yes, Ms. Sallis.
So I just want to know, just to clear the air, on St. Anne, I just, just for transparency sake, since these contracts were, you were involved, are you getting anything out of this for being involved in these conversations? If these were to be closed on us, if we were to move forward, is there something that you are gaining out of this?
No. Do you want me to expand upon it?
Yes, please.
After the board voted to pursue a possible expansion or replacement of McFadden, I was approached by both Mr. Reed and the principal at McFadden. Both my children went through McFadden. I know Dr. Blair very well, and I volunteered my time to do this. So interesting enough, I have negotiated with all four of the individuals that owned the property once before. You know, after being in business 38 years, there's a lot of people I've come in contact with, and in all earnest, only one of them hired a real estate agent to represent them. I told them exactly what was going on, made no ifs, ands, or buts about it, explained to each one of the four owners that we could, if the county chose to condemn the property, but I felt like that if we could negotiate a reasonable number, market value, that would probably be in their best interest and the county's also. So that's about all I've got for you right there, unless you want to get into the real details of my conversations with each one of the four.
The biggest issue I have is that there are a lot of us that sit on this board that have a lot of experiences in a lot of different places, and if, if you wanted to do that, I don't fault you at all, and I appreciate you wanting to volunteer your time. It should have been brought before the board for the board to vote on whether they wanted you to continue with those negotiations instead of Mr. Reed, because the vote was for Mr. Reed to handle them. That didn't happen, and it didn't come back before the board, and that's not the way that that process should have walked itself out.
Is there any other licensed Realtor on this board? Is there anybody else that carries two licenses in the state of Tennessee?
That gentleman right there, that gentleman right there is the one that goes into real estate contracts for us and negotiates things with us. If you wanted to do it, why wouldn't it be brought before the board in the public view for the board to vote on? It was not brought before the board for you to negotiate those contracts.
Ms. Darby?
I just told you that he wrote the contracts, I discussed it with the owners, they came up with the number. Now, Katie, if you don't trust me, you don't trust me. If that's what you're saying, if you think I've done something underhanded, then so be it.
If you want to be upset with somebody, be upset with myself. I knew what Shane, what Stan was doing, and I knew that he could help the situation. The contracts, and it came from Mr. Reed. But I knew he had expertise, and I knew that this had, this had come to him, and I said, please do that to help us.
And it should have been brought before the board.
Well, then that would be my fault, and I apologize for that.
The contracts that have, are on the agenda are my contracts I prepared with language in there for the protection of the board. So that's what you've got under agenda.
Ms. Darby? Go ahead. No, go ahead. You go, and I'll go after him.
Yeah, of course, and I will say, I give to Stan's credit. Look, I think if somebody has an expertise in something, it's, it'd be good to use it. It's beneficial to the board. But also, conversation that Stan and I had when I found out about this was that I didn't like this, it wasn't brought before the board. But the only reason I'm actually speaking right now is because that same conversation, I'm a little bit confused, and maybe Stan can answer this now, or Mr. Vaught. But in this result, I was just asking if there would be any benefit, and the conversation that you had is that, with me, was that you were going to recuse yourself because there would be some monetary value going to your company. So has that changed from what you told me?
Not on this.
Oh, no, not.
Okay.
Yes, Mr., Mr. Vaughn?
You know, I don't know what the problem is myself. I mean, Mr. Vaught knows more about real estate than anybody on this board, far, and I know as close as him and Mr. Reed, their respect for each other, you know, there wasn't any, there wasn't any doubt that I felt like this is the best way to go. And, I mean, it just proved that we got them basically where they read the signed contracts, and we've all benefited from it, and why we're sitting there worrying about coming front of the board or not. I mean, I don't know that we had to approve Stan going and asking somebody, hey, you want to sell your property? I think it's just a part of being a board member. You know, if I had the opportunity to, to buy a piece of property or find out that, ask somebody if they want to sell, I mean, I don't think you have to have board approval to ask them if they want to sell. I mean, I, I just felt like that's expected. So I appreciate the job that they've done because they've wrapped it up, and, I mean, I don't know if anybody else could have done any better.
Yes, Ms. Sallis.
Thank you. So I didn't know what was going on. However, the reason why I asked the question is because I don't mind someone that has an expertise going to talk about something in the area that they have expertise on. I don't have expertise on real estate, so if we've got a better negotiated price with someone that has more knowledge, expertise, that can help us save money, then I'm all about that, provided that there's not a financial gain that is coming out of that transaction for just going to talk. Any one of us here is, in my understanding, can bring anything to the board or even to Jeff or Dr. Sullivan or Trey Lee, for that matter, if there is a property that is open. I know for myself, I have made the conscious decision to stay out of all of these type of conversations when it comes to real estate or transactions, vendors, whatever, simply because of the whole thing that it can be looked upon as if you're going to get something out of it, when I know I'm not going to get anything out of it. So I appreciate Stan wanting to do something, volunteer his time, use his expertise, and not get something out of it in the end, just trying to help us. Because the reason why we've been looking at McFadden, it was because the parents hosted a meeting where they invited all of the board members. Not every board member showed up, and in that meeting, they had a presentation. In that presentation, they outlined a way of how they can get more land in the area that they were at so they can expand the school, so they can add more seats into the school, and then renovation. And in that conversation is where it came up that they were, they threw the idea of us buying the houses that were in the same vicinity of where McFadden is. So that's where all of that came in. It wasn't an idea that a board member came up with. Stan did not come up with the idea of buying the houses. It was that the parents came to the board and presented that, and then I believe when we were talking about the five-year plan, and we voted on that, and we brought up McFadden. That was also disclosed, that the parents had provided this presentation about these pieces of property that are on McFadden. So this is not something that, I think that needs to be cleared, that it was not a board-led that made up, that got, came up with the idea of buying these houses, that the parents came to us as a solution. And I think that Stan, I'm not, don't want to put words on his mouth or talk for him, but I'm thinking that as to goodwill, goodwill and faith, he said, well, I got expertise, let me see if I can figure out how we can do this deal if we can. So I appreciate Stan doing that. Should he have come before the board, probably that will have been better in the sense of transparency's sake. But we're here asking, I ask, if there is going to be a monetary value kickback or something, and he's saying no. So I'm comfortable with moving forward with this.
I just want to say, I don't think you should be upset with Stan. You should be upset with me, because I told Stan, you've got to, when he told me that, that he could help do with this, I gave him the green light to go do this, because I wanted to get this wrapped up as quickly as possible, because we've got a lot on our plate. So I apologize. Next time, I will, I'll make sure that you all... Would it been any different that if Claire Maxwell had gone down and just knocked on a bunch of doors and said, hello, my name's Claire Maxwell, I'd like to see, would you be interested?
Okay.
I'm chair.
Well, this coming back before you today, I know the whole thought about McFadden is one of our older schools, has been, has been presented to the board. It's one of the most costly schools from a maintenance standpoint, and the question that's been raised, is it worthwhile continuing to fix the, the school and just do ongoing repairs, or is it better to do a major renovation there and, and build a new school site there of some sort? So that's been the discussion the board's had, and, you know, I think the maintenance department, Mr. Lee, has presented kind of what the ongoing costs are with respect to the existing school, and they're very high. So, and the general thought was, it's really a school, is one, is it the oldest school in our school system?
Yes.
It's the oldest one in our school system, and the thought has been, it may be time to look to renovate that school and do something on site. So that is what really was precipitating calls of trying to look at doing something at McFadden, is rather than keep throwing money for this old building, it may be better to build a new building and not just keep throwing money after money on this old building and putting Band-Aids on this thing when it's the oldest school we have in the system. So, so that was then kind of the origin of, I think, the discussion here. I think Mr. Vaught, I think, had, knew some of the owners of land around there, and that's why he offered to talk to them, because he knew the owners who knew, who had, who had this surrounding property. In the end, this is going to come back to, of course, you've got a vote on it Thursday if the board decides to move forward with it, and you will have the opportunity to do an appraisal. So if someone's questioning the purchase price that's been negotiated in the contract, you can have appraisals done and see what the appraisals come in at. If they come in lower than what the negotiated price is, you can go back to that owner during this period of time and offer to buy it and pay it for a lower price than what's on the contract. With the free look period, the, the contract price is there, but you're really, you've got flexibility should you need it later on to work with that number and possibly lower it if the appraisal comes in lower than what the contract purchase price is and the seller is willing to negotiate with you on it. So, so while there's a contract price on the paper, you do, are going to have flexibility to deal with that down the road should you decide to do that. The benefit that this does, it gives you, it ties up the property, it keeps the seller from selling the property to someone other person who hears that you may be renovating the school there, and maybe someone wants to buy the houses for, to renovate these houses for new, for new properties, and could be a developer or house builder who may try to capitalize on that and get a benefit of hearing that a new school is going in. By virtue of you tying up the property, you're locking in your right to buy the property. So that prevents a third party coming in, snatching them up from underneath you or offering more, more money than what you've got right now. So it kind of protects you if you decide to go forward with the McFadden project.
Okay, Ms. Sharp?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So let me, let me just say this, and here's the issue, let's not muddy this waters about who asked for what. The problem here is the policy and the procedure and the precedent. You sent us an email, Jeff, at midnight one night about the bus contractors from Ms. Maxwell's authorization, that none of us were to talk to anybody else, that Mr. Vaught was going to handle that. A simple email telling us that this was going to happen from you or from Claire would have taken care of this. Let me, let me ask the second question. Why are we not lease purchasing this property? Because we don't have the money to go out and buy this property right now. If we lease purchase it, we could at least hold on to the property until we're ready to build there. Is it really even in our five-year plan?
We voted for it.
Don't think it's in our five-year plan.
Our current one.
And we're, we're looking at Lee Road, and we're looking at building two more schools. So I appreciate the work and everything that's been put into this, because it does need to be done. But what is the rush on us doing it right now? Why can't we lease purchase this? These people aren't going to move anywhere, obviously, and why wouldn't a lease purchase agreement work on this until we're ready to buy it?
Well, this is coming before the board now, so this whole issue, that's, that's why it's coming up with the board, for you guys as a board to decide what you want to do, if, if you want to move forward or not with regard to these things. The lease purchase, I don't know if that would, I don't know if I understand exactly what you're talking about with the lease purchase, but the, there's no, I don't think the school system wants to lease the property, because if you decide you need to have it for the school, you probably just, a better option than buying it than leasing it with the right to purchase it later on.
But why would we buy it now in front of everything else that we're trying to get done? They're obviously not going anywhere, because he contacted them. They're not moving.
I don't know. I mean, oftentimes when people buy a new school, or someone hears of a new school coming in, the general thing that happens around that school is the purchase of the real estate prices often tend to go up, and you have a spur of activity around that new school construction. So, so once, if, if, if we are going to move forward with a McFadden school and that becomes widely known, that we're definitely going to be doing it, you would expect the real estate in that area to go up in value. So if you're trying to negotiate to buy that after the fact, then you're probably paying a higher price than if you were able to get it.
That's why we could lease purchase it and make an agreement in a year or so.
Yeah. So... So, in the, in the scale of real estate purchases, these properties are not, I mean, it's not big money, you're, you know, less than a couple million for all five properties.
Still taxpayers.
But it's up to the board to decide. I'm not here advocating to buy them or not buy them. If you do want to buy them, then this opportunity's being presented to you to buy them, and if you don't, if the board does not want to do the contracts, certainly the board has no obligation to do the contracts.
Ms. Maxwell.
Mr. Vaughn.
The lease purchase idea is so like spitting in the wind. I mean, you know, it's throwing good money after bad, but, let me ask you a question, Mr. Reed. Yeah, let me repeat that. Lease purchase is like spitting in the wind, throwing good money after bad, and, yeah, it's just my opinion, but, let me ask you a question. If, say Cristiano, we're gonna eventually need a high school out there, and if I knew somebody that owns some property out there, and I went up and we were in conversation with him, is it okay if I ask him, "Would you be willing to sell this?" That's no commitment. All I've done is ask him, "Do I have the right to do that?"
You can't do that, yes.
Okay.
Ms. Maxwell.
Yes, Ms. Rosales.
So, I added all five, at three hundred thousand, that way, well, that, that would be 1.5 million, correct?
Correct.
So, could this be something we could look into dipping into our fund balance for 1.5 million? Because it's a one-time expenditure, that way we don't have to ask for the county commissioners for a bond, issue bond?
You have to ask county commissioner approval to use your fund balance. So it definitely, 1.5 million, I would never advocate for a bond issuance for that, but they, they have to approve.
The fund balance.
Going to fund balance.
Okay, so we potentially have the money to buy it.
Yeah, and they, just speaking, just from past experience, and I, they would much rather us purchase than lease anything. That's what hurt us in the CTE center. I would love, we would still have loved to have done, I love our mobile learning lab, so that was awesome. But that hurt us from being able to do a CTE center with the lease portion.
So, okay, so I'm gonna say something, because, and some of you guys are gonna get really mad at me right now, but the fact that we're trying to make it seem like a board member didn't come before the, the board to do something. I remember when someone else was a chair, and we got an email about someone that was authorized by the chair to present by email, different parcels of lands. So how is that not different in saying that we didn't authorize someone, we're going by policy, when we are accusing someone right now, it's been done in the past? Some of you guys are gonna get really mad about this.
Madam Chair.
But I'm just trying to bring up the hypocrisy in us accusing one of the other. At the end of the day, any single one board member can bring a piece of property. I know personally, I stay out of all these conversations, and just let the course, whoever, like Jeff Reed, or someone else, to bring it. So that's my two cents on that.
Ms. Darby.
I think Mr. Tidwell's next, and then myself.
Okay, Ms. Tidwell.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I apologize.
No, you're, you're right. I, I don't think anybody, just to be clear, at least from my standpoint, I don't think anybody's arguing, I made, I'd make the argument that somebody with expertise should be out there, and I think that we had talked about a policy at several different policy committees, trying to get a real estate agent involved in helping us find property. But, Ms. Rosales, you were the one that wrote the policy on how we were gonna find this land, and how the process would go, and that was fine, it got voted through, it got passed through. It would have been useful, and Mr. Vaughn may not have known about that policy, so it would have been great that when he came to someone to make a move on that, that they would have let him know, "Hey, we have a policy about this particular land acquisition, so just make sure you're following it in that order." I think that's, that's kind of the concern there, and also, bringing land forth is one thing, but he brought contracts forth, so there was price negotiation already. And I just wish it would have came before the board. But that's not my question, I'm just following up with what you said. Trey, my question is, I think that this project is what, what cost, if you had to ballpark me the cost of this project for McFadden, to have a new building, what are we looking at? Do we have a design in hand, in order? Are we talking about eight million, fifteen million?
At this point, I don't know what size the building would be, we haven't been given, you know, any indication how far we want to go. If you were looking at a comparable size, I mean, would the board want to increase the enrollment? And, and we would need that information. I don't think any of that's been determined at this point.
Sure, okay. And the reason I was asking is just to follow up to, I am in line with the idea that we could use our fund balance to move this along, while we're actually gonna turn around and go to the county commission, ask them for it. We just talked about it at our retreat earlier, a big ask, but also, that big ask is for a real need, so, just to make that clear. But if we could dig into our fund balance and that, and I'm trying to just do this constantly, but it is a one-time purchase, and so if it was something along the lines of like, I know we talked about it, Daniel McKee possibly tearing down the old building, building the old behind it, I, I think the number was brought up around eight to ten, around that. If it was something similar to that, maybe this whole conversation, this whole thing could possibly be pulled from fund balance, just get this taken care of, as it is one of our oldest schools. So, anyways, just adding my two cents on the back of that as well.
Hold on, we got Ms. Darby, and Ms., Ms. Darby.
I just need to clear the air, because it feels like things were getting personal, or people are trying to say somebody's accusing somebody. I didn't accuse anybody of anything. I simply stated that what we voted for was for Mr. Reed to do the negotiations, and nothing else had been brought forth before the board. There's a difference between someone bringing to Mr. Reed, which I had sent someone to him, because somebody told me they had some land they wanted to sell, I said, "You need to send it to Mr. Reed." There's a difference between that and negotiating pricing. I don't have a problem with what Mr. Vaughn did, it's not an issue of trust, it's an issue of public transparency, policy and procedure. What does the public think, when the one person that sits on our board, who's in real estate, is negotiating things, but it was never discussed publicly prior to that, and what we had publicly agreed on was for Mr. Reed to do it? It's just, it's a better look for the Rutherford County School Board to vote on those matters in public, and be completely transparent about it. That is my point, because going forward, we don't want to set a precedent that we can all be running around the state of Tennessee negotiating things on behalf of the board, that is not our role. Mr. Tidwell works in construction and roofing, but he's not out there negotiating roofing contracts. Like, that's not our job, and I appreciate his expertise, and I'm not saying I would have had a problem with him doing that, all I was simply saying was, it was never brought forth before the board, it was never voted on, it was never talked about publicly. So I'm just trying to make that clear. There is no personal, I'm not accusing him of anything, I just want us to be clear that going forward, as board members, it's not our job to negotiate things on behalf of the board, that is not something we should be engaging in, and if the board chooses for a board member to engage in that, it should be the board choosing by vote, through public means, for the board to do that.
To avoid this in the future, this will not happen.
Ms. Maxwell.
Yes.
The reason why I said...
Hang on, Ms. Sharp.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I brought one or two properties to the school board when I was chair, none of them came to a vote, there was no negotiations. As Ms. Darby said, we can't go out and negotiate on part of the board. That's not us. People bring us property all the time, it should come to the board, it should come to the chair, it should come to someone, just like we had done, and we had voted for Jeff to do it. Nothing against Stan, it's policy and procedure, and us following the precedent. So, you can talk about, somebody brought some property to the board before, yes, I did, but it never came to a vote, I didn't go and negotiate, we never even talked about entering into a contract with that plot of land and the company that owned it. Okay.
When you offer somebody a contract, to me, that's Jeff's negotiating with them. Here's your contract, you either take it or leave it. If you leave it, what would it take? That's a negotiation, in my opinion. And, I mean, I, I think, man, we're beating a dead horse, you know, doing this kind of thing. I mean, I don't think it's...
Ms. Maxwell.
I mean, I think, you know, I'm glad Stan and Jeff did what they did, because we're moving on this thing, and that's something we've got to do, we've got to do something with McFadden, in a hurry. If we don't buy this land, we ain't gonna have to worry about McFadden renovation, there ain't gonna be no place to, to move on it. So, you know, I don't know why we're beating around the bush on it, because, to me, it's just a no-brainer.
Ms. Rosales.
Thank you. So, the reason I made a comment is because of the comment that was made, that, look, saying that I don't trust the conversations that were said, and it sounded a little murky. That, right there, whether it was implied or not, makes it seem that implication that something was going on behind everyone's back. It almost is accusatory. May not have used the words, "I'm accusing you," but saying that out in the public makes it seem that we had a board member that went behind our backs, everybody, everybody's back to gain something out of a deal, or whatever. So that's why I made the point of bringing something up that happened a few years ago, where the board did get an email about another person saying that they had allowed for them to contact owners of where land that was potential for them to give to the board for us to sell. That did happen. The board was not previewed to the conversations that was having with this consultant, real estate agent, or whatever. We didn't know anything about this until we got this email. So, we're, we're trying to build, bring up something, create something, when this has been done in the past. Yes, there was a policy, I brought a policy, and I did write up with your help on how to follow this procedure. At the end of the day, it said that who ends up doing the negotiation is Mr. Reed. All Stan did was say, "What is your asking price?", and bring that asking price to Jeff. He didn't say, "Well, the board can only take five thou-" "We'll take it if you lower it by $5,000." He didn't do that. That's negotiation. All he did is ask for the asking price, bring the asking price to you, correct, Jeff? He's giving you the asking price, and you, Jeff, are the one who's going to be negotiating the, the final asking price, because if there's gonna be any counters, offers, it's gonna be you who's gonna be representing, correct?
Correct.
So there's no negotiation that's been happening right now, until a contract is signed, final dated by both parties, that's when the negotiations are in, and you will be tasked, if we sign this contract, to go and negotiate that for us, correct?
Yes.
Until we sign it. So Stan hasn't done any negotiation for us. So, as far as policy, we're still following the policy.
Madam Chair.
Let's move on.
Yes, yes, Ms. Darby.
Dr. Sullivan, do you know, because we just had this conversation about Thurman Francis today, does McFadden have, like, an extensive waiting list? Do we need to look at increasing that enrollment? I know they're in Murphysboro, so I don't know how different the...
I would, I would love to expand the seats at McFadden.
Okay, so it currently has roughly...
Hundreds upon hundreds for a waiting list.
No, no, I mean, like, how many seats does the school hold, and how many would you like to see it moved in?
Give me just a second.
Three, nine, four hundred, one minute, six hundred.
We could fill every seat.
They are at...
Three, nine.
Yep. Three eighty-eight, three ninety is their capacity. Six hundred would be amazing.
I don't want to beat a dead horse either, but I am gonna say this, Mr. Vaughn himself said that he told them that the county could condemn the property, so you can say there's not negotiating, but when things like that are being discussed, it does look like that. And again, I don't, my biggest issue is just that it wasn't brought forth, and it wasn't done in the way in which it should have been handled. That's it.
Well, and I told you, in the future, it will, it won't, this will not happen, but I really felt like he could help expedite things and get things in going.
Which is, it's fine, it just, it really should have been brought before the board, done in a public way, that's it.
Ms. Maxwell.
Yes, Mr. Tidwell.
Hey, on these, on the enrollment, increasing the enrollment, you gotta test them, right? So when you say there's hundreds of waiting lists, are those kids that could have?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Let's move on.
The other, okay.
No, and I think, just for me, it would help when we vote on this for direction, because there was direction from the board in August, to move this up on the priority list, so whatever we decide, we either need to, to move this up or down based on some of our conversations today.
On the five-year plan?
Yes.
Okay, on the five-year plan, okay, we will do that Thursday. Okay, number two.
Number, go for it, nope, go for it.
So, this is another property that's become available, that the seller is willing to sell it to the Board of Education. If we have any interest in it, this is not a piece of property we've looked at before, this is being presented, because it's a sizable piece of property, and if you want to have a school site in this area, it is a potential school site in the Blackman area. So the location is, is a good area. So, so what this, on the dispeace property, this has been identified as a potential school site, a contract has been negotiated with the purchase of a parcel of land, negotiated consisting of approximately eighty-five acres in the Blackman area. This one, too, has a hundred and eighty-day inspection period in the contract, with two, thirty days extensions, to provide the board time to study the contract, get, study the property, get appraisals done, and undergo whatever further negotiation you want to do with regards to the property. This is contingent also upon county commission approval of funding to the property. This is not a property we have looked at, the school board has not, has looked at yet, but it became available. And basically, just to tie it up at this point, should the board decide, the board has an interest in this, this contract is being presented. This is not obligating the board to close the property, this is not obligating the board to move forward with anything on the property, but if the board chooses to, it would be an opportunity for the board to tie up the property, if you choose to do it, and puts you first in line to buy it. You have a hundred and eighty-day inspection period, you walk for any reason, you are out no money at all, if you decide to walk before the end of the inspection period.
And where exactly in the Blackman area is this location?
This is, this near the new school we built. And Trey, do you wanna, do you have, can you talk about the address on this property?
It is the dairy farm that backs up to twenty-four, just past Carter Road. That's how I view it, it's on the opposite side of the road, backs up through the interstate.
Be a great place for high school in. Be perfect. It'd be good, it'd be a perfect...
You can answer honestly, we just talked about it today.
It'd be a perfect place for a high school, wouldn't you say?
Go for it, Trey.
A lot of people have tried to buy this piece of property for a long time. That, that's a board decision on whether it's a perfect piece of property, it's a good location. I have not analyzed the property, we haven't gone into, I haven't asked any, I haven't given any direction to move forward. I am familiar with all this stuff.
There's not many properties around there that'd be, big enough to build a high school, correct?
I think we have concerns of whether or not...
I have, I like a decent property, despite it being... Without correct analysis, I'm not sure that it's adequate for a high school, for twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
So, the reason I say that is, we typically look for seventy-five to eighty acres, if we have sewers. I don't think sewers are allowed up here. There is sols there, to where we can build our own system. I did look today to see if we got the sols back, and there is sols there. But until the sols are tested, and we have an engineer look at it, I don't know how many acres that would take.
Okay, Ms. Sharp.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Lee, is this the property that is in a trust, that the lady lives out of town, and several people have tried to buy it before?
No. That property is almost right across from Baker, where Baker turns into Black.
Okay. And number two, as procedure, we have always went and looked at all of these pieces of property before we voted on them? I will not be voting on either of these pieces of property until we go and look at them.
Well, this is, that's something for the board to discuss, that's why it's coming for you tonight. If you do have an interest in the property, an inspection can be arranged for you to look at the property, and you don't have to vote on the contract this week. So, if you are, if there's an, this is being brought to you to see if the board has any interest in the property. If you have any interest in pursuing the property as a board, we can get an inspection lined up, and go look at it, before you move forward with it. So this is kind of the initial stages of this thing, and you may have no interest, if you have, if the board has no interest in this property, fine, we'll say we have no interest. But in the event you do have an interest, the inspection by the board members can look, be set up before... be set up before you vote on this. So, and of course, if you decide to approve the contract before you buy it, you certainly would do all the testing that you normally do to decide whether or not this property is suitable for, for a school site, for whatever your respective use is. You know, I know that there's been discussion about doing smaller high schools. I don't know if this is a potential site for a smaller high school. That's a board decision you guys to make. I know we have these for middle schools. Whether this is suitable for a middle school site, that's a decision for the board to make. So this is just being presented to the board as an option that's there. The sellers have said they will make it available to the Board of Education if you, if the board's interested. And it is a sizable parcel of property in a good location with Black. So, which is one of our highest growing areas in the county. So if there's an interest there by the board, this is being presented for you to look at. If the board wants to do inspections, certainly that can be set up. That we have done, and like you say, Ms. Sharp, you typically done inspection.
Both of these pieces of properties need to be looked at before we vote on them.
Yeah, so, and that can be arranged.
But if we vote on it Thursday night and prove to move forward with it, that then, all that does is, just saying we interested, right? Would not-
Well, if you vote to approve the contract, you do, or approve the contract. So, but it's subject to the inspection period. So you can, you have a free look for 180 days and you can walk away. There's no, you're not out any money if you decide to do that. Ms. Sharp is correct that we have typically looked at the par, properties and visited sites on the major sites like this before we bought them. So I do think that's something the board should do to look at the property. All board members should have an opportunity to walk the property and inspect it and see where it's located and see, see what you think about it. So I do think that's something the board should do before you decide to buy the property.
We'll go tomorrow afternoon.
Ms. Maxwell? Yeah. Yes, Ms. Rosales.
Can we arrange for us to see the property on this musk?
We can. I mean, I can contact them and get, see what dates available and what dates work for board members. Sometime we've gone, we've had a bus go from central office, central office, and sometime we've had board members just drive separately to the school site. So whatever the board is inclined to do, if you, if you, we do want to look at it, we can get a bus range, a central office to take the board members collectively to the site. Or we can just have everyone drive there at a time that everyone agrees to and then look at the property.
I will, I will recommend that because we have done that in the past. I don't want to do something different than we have in time. I will agree with Ms. Sharp that we should look at this first before we make a decision to move forward with person, with going through the inspection period. Because that's what we've done with the other properties.
Okay. Ms. Tidwell?
Not saying that we don't pull it or anything, just saying.
Yeah, Ms. Tidwell.
Yes, you know, what's interesting about this, this particular area, so we bought the Beatty property, for the elementary and a middle school. We're looking at the Lee property, going to purchase it, potentially put in a high school and a middle school. And if I were to draw like a circle around this area, this, this high-growth area, we keep buying in the same area and, and plan on continuing to build schools in the same area, but we will need schools outside of this area. So for me, I mean, I, I just don't, I don't know. I guess it depends on where the price comes in because, as I mentioned many times before, stuff is cheaper now than it will be in the future. So if it's going to be something that we need in the future, I guess it would really depend upon the price. But I feel like we're buying close to the same areas. We got the Beatty, middle and elementary, Lee Road, not exactly the area, but still close, a potential middle and high school. I don't know. Just throwing that thought out there to you guys.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reed. Appreciate it. This director's update?
I'll have Thursday, but I want to thank Dr. Harrell, Mr. Bissinger, SCTV, and our students for running it. Thank you guys very much.
Good job.
General discussion. Does anybody have anything they want to speak? Okay.
Uh, yes, I would like to say-
Go ahead, sir.
I was going to say, thank, thank you to TCAT for hosting us today. That was awesome. Really amazing stuff going on over there. That was really good of them to allow us to come in. And I felt like we had a really good retreat. So I appreciate that.
Yes, Ms. Sharp?
And Smartness Culinary Arts, the sandwiches and the kettle chips that we have, they're delicious.
They were delicious.
Delicious, delicious. Thank you guys for putting that together.
Thank you for everything.
And to our ladies in the, in the executive office who always take care of us and everybody else.
Thank you.
Got everything approved.
I'd like to say thanks to Patrick White. You know, he's, he's homegrown. So that's, that's a good thing. He's really done a lot of great things and is going to do a lot of great things in the future. But proud of him because he's homegrown and it's always good to see local. Shows our educational system does a pretty good job.
Yes, it does. Is there any other questions, comments? Okay. We're adjourned.